I'd like to call the Township of North Huntington Board of Commissioners, special meeting for Thursday, September 12th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Order, roll call, Mayor Drusilka.
Commissioner Harold here.
Commissioner Bertani here.
Commissioner Blasko here.
Commissioner Martino here.
Commissioner Bevan here.
Commissioner Casera here.
Commissioner Higas here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence for remembrance of 9/11?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. If any residents would like to speak tonight, they can sign their book at the podium. Thank you. We have one resident tonight, Rich Walton. Come up. All right, yeah, if you want to come up and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, well, he's with the prospective hauler, so he'll be addressed later in the meeting.
All right, then let the record black no, citizens input for tonight. Or access and discussion topics, Mayor Drusilka.
Okay, the first topic today is an ad, requesting an ad alternate for our 2019 Fibromat Ceiling and FB Roadway paving. We had two ad alternates in the bid package, Frog Road Route 993 to Station 8 plus, to the station plus 00 feet, and then Lighthouse Lane from Naverick Hill to the Terminus. We didn't award those with the base bid simply because we weren't sure how our finally paving, you know, the bids came in a little bit over, or right at where we thought we would be on the base bid. But as we had some savings, we've worked out about $200,000 right now in the good on the 2019 Million paving program, because we had to take a couple off due to some work that hasn't been done by the utility, or some drainage work that wasn't able to get done. So what we do is, we do have these, both of these roads scratched and leveled, it's part of this firm, so they're ready to go. And now, I'm asking for action on this tonight because the paver, or actually, the contractor has mobilized, is in the township, so we'd like to get this awarded, so he can complete these, because if he has to re-mobilize, then we're going to add on probably about $5,000 to $7,000 of re-mobilization. It is on the agenda.
Yeah. So Jeff, these streets, Susan Drive, Elliott Drive, Evan Street, and Pine Street, does it just going to be done at another time?
Yeah, they will be picked up next year.
Okay.
If all the utility work, I mean, a couple, we're waiting for, you know, third-party utilities to get done, and we don't want to pave it and then tear it up.
Absolutely, okay. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Any board discussion? All in favor, I say tonight.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The second one is a proposed revision to the Township policy manual of smoking, the smoking policy for Township employees within Township-owned facilities. As we did the young lungs at play in the park, it kind of came to our attention as I was reading the policy that was written in 2005, that our smoking policy, you know, by name signifies what smoking is, that you cannot do in the Township buildings, lighted cigarette, lighted cigar, lighted pipe. It excludes any vaping or electronic cigarettes or smoking devices. What I could do is, you have it, you know, men in red, is simply add those to the policies to include, you know, what is a smoking device.
Now Jeff, that applies to the employees, do we have anything in place just for visitors to the townhouses, do we have separate policy for that?
Well, no, it'll be the same policy, we will post these, no smoking, I mean, we don't have a criminal offense, we really have no way of, you know, we do, our buildings are non-smoking, actually, as a public building in Pennsylvania, we're not smoking by state law. Yeah. So this, you know, I can answer any questions, if not, I would like to have this put onto the voting agenda for next week. Okay. Let me, I'm going to go to the monitors for the next one. The next item is the response districts of the North Huntington Township Volunteer Fire Departments. The chiefs got together over the summer, and, you know, through the fall, and came up with revised districts for each of the fire departments. In order for this to go down to the county to be officially incorporated, it does need Board of Commissioner approval. We do have the letter, you know, from the Firefighters Association stating that they all do have approval, and they have all signed off on the map, so the problem, we would pass a resolution at the next meeting, and then that would be forwarded down to the County 911.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Also haven't agreed with it, I'm good with it. Okay, as the best technology fails. Let me see, because I do need it for the next one. I do apologize for the little break there.
Okay. Okay. Okay, the next item is going to be the trash bids for the township. We did, over the past three months, advertised for our trash bid beginning, that will come in effect January of 2020. We did receive three bids from Waste Management, Republic Services, and Westmoreland Sanitary doing businesses, County hauling. The low bids for each of the weighted services, which is the unlimited recycling and trash pickup, senior citizen bags, senior citizen discounts. The low bidder was Westmoreland Sanitary, and just to kind of give a, year one is $16.54, which is actually roughly about a $2 reduction from what we're currently paying. The senior citizen bag program is $1.79 per bag, and the senior citizen discount is $15.65. The door side pickup, which is a non-weighted service, that is $22 a month, if that is a service that is completely at the discretion of the resident, if they want to take that. As you know, we had waste management for the past couple of years, past couple of contracts. Westmoreland Sanitary is a new provider coming in, we discussed this briefly last month, that because they are new, they are small, they are, you know, in the area, you know, we did have some concerns, that we did meet with our solicitor on, we kind of took a look at, you know, do they have adequate staffing on the trucks, do they have adequate equipment, and does the hazardous waste pickup meet our expectation of what we have right now, that is basically, within 30 days, you usually can have your hazardous waste picked up. We've met with the ownership and management, which are here today, and they've answered our questions to our satisfaction, that we feel that they have met the specifications of the bid. We reviewed the bid with our solicitor, and it is a qualified bid, and you know, with the board, you know, with, from the staff's perspective, you know, with, you know, some wording in the contract with bonding, we would, you know, recommend that this be awarded to Westmoreland Sanitary doing business as County hauling for the next four years.
Any board discussion or questions, I guess, for the applicants since they're here? I have just one for you guys. With waste management, we've had a lot of changeover in the recycling. What can you guys do to help educate the residents of North Huntington about the changes in the recycling program, what's going into the bins, because I think most residents are really completely ignorant of what's actually recyclable at this point, is there anything that you guys can do on your end, whether it's putting flyers in with mailings, I'm not sure if you guys have a Facebook page, anything, but what can we do to really let them know what's actually recyclable at this point, and what's just going to go into the trash? If you don't mind, state your name.
If you can push the button that says push, a green light should come on.
Sorry about that. The, I'd be more than happy to put a flyer in there and show exactly what's considered recyclable and non, kind of some practical kind of lessons that would give opportunities for people to understand, you know, because, you know, XYZ numbered plastic isn't recyclable, and everyone's like, well, what is that, so we would, we would work to, you know, highlight some of what that actually is, and have like practical applications, and be able to provide a flyer on that, that wouldn't be anything that would be difficult whatsoever.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, while we have them up there, I got one question, I'm sure you've got to get around our area and check it out and everything, the dates of the pickups and that, are they going to be consistent with what they are now, or are you looking to change them?
Yeah, I don't think anything in terms of routing was planning to be changed, I think we were looking to do, you know, have it broken out over five days, and, but in terms of the routes, I think we're going to look at it, but I assume that Waste Management would be running it relatively efficiently, you know, they might have something that pulls one of their trucks in one direction on a certain day, that might not have for ours, but I would say that a lot of that will be on the periphery, and that we would plan to have, you know, very, we try to keep, we try to keep it as similar as possible. If there's something that's kind of out of that framework, we would bring it to you all, and discuss it with, you know, Mr. Drusilka or Mr. Turley.
Okay, because I'm sure that would make a smoother transition for you guys and our residents.
We always want a smooth transition, and I know there was a lot of questions and concerns related about that, and we're, you know, I had said to your managers that, you know, your town was the town that we really wanted to win, and we're very excited about the opportunity to serve. So, you know, that came across in a relatively compelling price, and, you know, we're very committed to dedicating above and beyond resources to making sure that, you know, you have, you know, premier service, and I think that quite honestly, we provide, you know, very good collection service, and, you know, we think that, you know, your residents will be very happy, and obviously, you know, hopefully get very good value.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any questions?
Okay, the next agenda is the 2020 budget preview, I just want to give a little bit of an update of where we are in the process. In 2020, you're going to see a different presentation of the budget. You know, most of it is impacted because we now have a new financial system, so everything's going to be a little bit different. Also, we're going to be, you know, we're going to do, as we're doing now, our critical analysis of our revenue streams and our spending trends, we want to develop a plan that provides and guides us, you know, to spend to what, you know, what we have, we're not looking to increase at this point any revenue sources. And this year, I do want to see, at the budget document that we provide you, a little bit more comprehensive appendix and department narratives, that way, it shows the detail of where the money's going, not just, you know, a list of line items, and, you know, we're buying trucks, we're buying police cars, we're buying guns, you know, you will be able to see trends, there will be a little bit more analysis at the end, that way, whenever anyone picks up that budget document, they'll be able to see that it's just not, you know, a collection of numbers thrown together in the course of two nights, there's actual research and thought process behind it, and also an analysis going forward of how our revenue's going to track to our expenses as we go through in the next couple of years, so it's going to be a little bit more comprehensive of a document, and I'm hoping that it'll give you the information that you need to make the, to make sound choices. One thing that you're going to see is, I've asked, you're going to see Department Directors, you know, a list of accomplishments of what they've done over the past year, how they've spent their money efficiently, and also, you know, where they've, you know, put efficiencies into their operations, we just don't want to keep funding it, let's say, 3% increase, 3% increase, 3% increase, get the same service just for a little bit more cost. I want to show you where we've cut costs, where we've streamlined programs, and how we plan to put new programs in at a zero sum to the budget, that is, our goal is to keep increasing services by keep redefining how we deliver services, and we're finding there's a lot of areas out there, and, you know, we'll be, it's exciting to be able to show you how we've put these in. And also, in this budget process, and this is something that is, you know, I like to put a trademark, this is my process, is that I like to put programmatic expenditures into three areas, and I've asked our Department Directors, as we do this, you know, to classify their expenses as core, ancillary, or supportive. A core service are services that we have to give basically by law as municipality. We know that, you know, they have a true public benefit, there's no single benefactor, and they're always, the services are going to be funded first, so if you're doing a zero-sum budget approach, you know, the core services are life, safety, health, general welfare, we plow streets, we patrol streets, we, you know, keep stormwater moving. An ancillary service is a quality-of-life service, it increases the service level in municipality above a core service, but it still has a public benefit, it would be like a secondary funding as we come down, you know, come down the pike. And the support service, supportive service, this is one that really falls out of traditional government services, and is solely a quality-of-life issue. These are done, let's say, fields that are developed for third-party uses, you know, that's probably the easiest one, that leagues, you develop parks, you put in all this, but then the public can't use it, you know, it's done by leagues, a lot of supportive services can be done by user fees, or, you know, pushing the cost from the general fund taxpayer onto the users, as their specified user groups. So these are just, these are areas that we fund, as general quality of life are funded, you know, if you're taking, cutting the pie, it's the last slice of the pie to go, as you take a look at it, so, you know, we'll kind of, you know, weave these philosophies in as we go, and then by classifying these, we'll be able to give the board, you know, what the staff feels is a priority to funding, and then you can kind of, you know, rank your priority as we go through approving, you know, funding levels. So those three, of core, ancillary, and supportive, you know, kind of make, you know, looking at the budget, you know, quite easy. And then this is, lastly, the budget calendar. The Department Director is going to have their capital budgets into me by the 27th of September, they will have their department numbers into me by October 10th, and November 4th, which is the first Monday of November, I will have the proposed budget to the Board of Commissioners for their, to begin their review. Our public hearings on November 14th, we'll have our first work session on the budget, and then November 20th, we'll have our, you know, a second work session, and at the November 20th meeting, if the budget looks palatable and, you know, agreeable upon, we can then approve it for public inspection and publication, and it could be adopted at the December 18th meeting, and then there's additional dates that we can have workshops. The trick is that our budget needs to be published for public inspection at least 20 days prior to adoption, so that's what we look at, that you have to make it available to the public 20 days prior to adoption, and then any significant, you know, if there's no significant amendments, then you can adopt it after that. So that is going to be, you know, in a nutshell, you're going to see a bigger document, and you're also going to see more detail in the presentations, so, you know, I want to make sure that from the Board of Commissioners, from the public, you see how we're spending that $14, $15 million in general fund, and capital fund, we see, that you will approve, so that's the budget in a nutshell.
Any questions?
And one other one before we go to new business, that is approving the trick-or-treat date, I forgot to put that on the agenda. Is there any problem of approving trick-or-treat for Thursday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM? Which is generally when we have trick-or-treat in the township, Halloween Day, 6:00 to 8:00. I'll put, we'll do an official motion for that. Is that it? That's it, then we, you know, for the new business.
All right, thank you, Planning Engineering, Mr. Fonzie.
Yes, bear with me while I'm getting connected here.
All right, sorry about that delay, we have two items that came through the Planning Commission this month. The first is a site plan and subdivision for the Circleville Volunteer Fire Department. The survey, the surveyor on this project was Ryan Jones, this is a lot consolidation. Currently, the fire department sits on two lots, there's actually a property line going through the main building, so this will correct that, if you look to the far right of the drawing, the triangular piece, that's a lot that the fire department has purchased with an existing home and an existing apartment building, so those three lots will essentially become one lot for this project, so that pretty much sums up the subdivision consolidation, there was, comments were answered by KU Resources and Ryan Jones, there's no outstanding issues there. The site plan will involve raising those two buildings in red there, the home and the apartment building, and a 92-square-foot two-story office building addition will be constructed in its place, so there's a look at the footprint of that addition, and it will be connected to the main fire hall by a breezeway. So, KU again did the review on this one, the fire department did go in front of the zoning hearing board, they needed a variance on a setback on Parkway Drive, they received that, they were asking for a waiver from the Sado, which is parking no more than 10 feet from the building, and there are a few outstanding conditions, the one that you see in the memo from NHTMA, that's been resolved, they have no issues with the plan, but there will be needed, a Conservation District will have to sign off, a stormwater agreement will have to be signed, and then just outstanding engineering issues from the KU letter dated August 30th. They did supply some building elevations, it will be brick on the first floor, I believe, and block on the lower portion, it's essentially going to match what the existing fire hall looks like, this is for their current tenant, their current tenant is going to move into this building, so we'll look to attach these elevations and make that a condition as well. But that's pretty much it, does the board have any questions on this plan? Okay, the second item is the Capson Plan, and this is on Southampton Drive, as you head into the Chestnut Hill subdivision. The Capsons own lot 2R, which is the yellow lot on the screen, this lot was created by the Painter Plan back in 2017, so this is a vacant lot, the Capsons would like to build a home, but they are trading land for an easement with their neighbor on the blue lot, which is the Dankovich family, they live in Chestnut Hill, they are gaining 15 feet of land from the Capsons, that's the dark blue strip, that's what's going to be transferred to the blue, the blue lot, and the orange polygon is where the sanitary sewer easement is going to be granted by the Dankiviches, that's what the yellow lot needs to connect to the sanitary manhole. So in order for that house to work, they needed to gravity feed into that manhole, which is basically on the right side of that orange polygon there, so it's just a boundary line revision, very simple, any comments have been addressed already by Denny Rosetti, the surveyor, so I have no concerns with this plan, does the board have any questions on it? That's all I have?
All right, thank you. Old business, Mayor Drusilka?
Okay, old business coming up from last month is the fireworks ordinance, I did provide a redraft of an ordinance incorporating Commissioner Casera's comments that our solicitor sent up this afternoon, so the board had asked this to be placed back on the agenda for discussion at this meeting.
Any board input?
Yeah. On the second page, Section 1, permitted hours of use, the idea of this ordinance was to take up people just shooting up fireworks at will, anytime. This, Section 1's allowing them to shoot 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM, any day they want to. There again, you know, I'm going to reiterate, the schoolchildren that have went to bed and somebody blasts one off at 10 o'clock at night, you know, the autistic people, the elderly, the pets, I don't think that we need to permit fireworks to be used the whole year, all 365 days a year. Changes I'd sent in was the Section 2, what I'm asking is, I'd like to see Section 1 taken out, Section 2 to be changed to, the use of consumer fireworks is defined in Act 43 of 2017, may occur on the following specific dates and times, July 4th is when most of the fireworks should be used, July 4th maybe, and also December for New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. Further in here, we have as far as permits being able to be given, we offer burning permits to residents, and I brought up about a permit being offered for, if somebody was going to have a graduation party, a wedding, some special event that they wanted to put off fireworks, they could apply for a permit, and that is in here, which is where I think would take, if they wanted to do any other than these specific days, July 3rd, 4th, 5th, and December 31st, and January 1st, they would apply for a permit. Other than that, I think we should restrict the fireworks the other days. It's possible if the other board members might want to add some federal holidays or something, you know, we could add some other holidays, but I really don't see a need for every day.
I'll chime in after Dwayne there, Section 1, subsection 1, I think 10:00 PM is too late, as Dwayne was mentioning, I'm not sure if I'm up for restricting any other calendar days, but I think for subsection 2 there, to add Memorial Day, Labor Day, days that you're going to have a high usage of fireworks anyway, I think it's going to save our police department some headaches, because we know there's going to be a high majority of people using those during those times, but again, I think this should kind of go in line with what's going to be our next discussion point, our noise ordinance, and having it cut off at 9:00 PM, be a fair cutoff time, unless we want to look at doing a Sunday through Thursday kind of times, and then going Friday, Saturday, but then that opens up another can of worms for clarification, confusion.
You know, I don't understand, I'm definitely in favor of having some type of policy, but limiting when you can do them, and then I said on the last month's meeting, I was kind of against the whole having us, you know, apply for, you know, uses permit, because who's that going to be put on, is it going to be put on a manager, who's going to decide that, I know we talked about possibly having to come against the board, but, I mean, there's, where do you draw the line, is a wedding okay, is a birthday okay, or, there's really no way to do that, in my opinion, so, I mean, I'm okay, I would agree with, you know, maybe if you limit it during the week to 9:00 PM, something of that nature, but you're just basically limiting people's rights to actually do the fireworks, to enjoy the fireworks when you're coming down, limiting when you're coming down, uh, limit it more and more. And then I know Tony had some concerns too, um, how are we gonna police it? Um, it's gonna be a whole nother issue. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of maybe, you know, lowering, uh, the P.M. to nine for just normal days. But I would like to see the section removed. I guess that's section two, um, basically hold section two taken out.
I'd like to ask Chief Rizov for his comments.
Uh, yeah, Manager Silka, he provided me a copy of, uh, of the draft, and I got a cha- I got a chance to look it over. I have a couple of concerns from a, a legal standpoint. So, I mean, my officers are the ones that are gonna be on the front line, obviously trying to enforce this. Two, can we be more restrictive than the state law? So that's my question. If I'm going, if my guys, my officers are going to be called to a repetitive problem, and the state law says that you can do it anytime you want, can we now be more restrictive? Can we cite and can it hold up in court? Those are the issues that I have. Um, I, I don't have an answer for those. Um, I, I, that's, that's, this is, this law's brand new, and I know municipalities across the Commonwealth are obviously struggling, you know, with, you know, the ramifications of an open-ended law like what we're dealing with now. But my concerns are from a legal point. You know, I don't wanna put my officers in a situation to where, you know, we can't enforce something. Sounds good, but is it enforceable? So that's my, that's my issue.
So I'll try to address that. And North Huntington Township's not unlike every single municipality, uh, in this Commonwealth right now that, that this law affects. And every, every borough, every township, every community that I represent, they've raised these legitimate issues with me on how you can regulate these consumer fireworks when the state has, uh, permitted them and put in regulations of their own. And the advice that I have given to my, uh, clients is that, um, you're gonna get, you, you, the more restrictive that you are in what you try to do, the more likely you're going to have a challenge. And anytime you see a challenge to these various state-regulated situations, the local municipality usually loses. Uh, the, the courts say, "The state has already chosen to regulate that. You can't im- impose additional restrictions on top of it." You can't put a restriction that keeps somebody from carrying a gun into this building right now because that's regulated by the state. And, and I would suspect that's the same with, with fireworks ordinances. So, um, it, one of the communities I represent, and I think that, you know, this draft originally came from, I put an ordinance into effect because they wanted some regulation, but it was simply regulating the hours that they could put them off and trying to keep the sleeping hours firework-free with the hope that if that simple regulation gets challenged, that maybe the courts would leave it stay. But, but I'm in complete agreement with you, Chief.
Yeah, that's, that's my issue.
And I, that was my question, is can't we be more restrictive than the state? So, but if, if we do are gonna do this, I, like Craig said, we put hours on it. I think Sunday through Thursday, we should have a certain time, and Friday and Saturday, maybe a little later because it is the weekend and so on and so forth. So that's my two cents.
I'm okay with doing that, but I'm definitely not okay with giving them a permit. Absolutely not. You know? So I should be able to put my fireworks off when I want to. I might not need 30 days. I might decide to do it on Saturday. But this, with the permit, they, well, I got those 30 days ahead of time for any of my people out in the audience, 30 days ahead of time before I put it off.
There's one regulation in the act currently that's, that's never enforced and is usually always violated, and that's the fact that you're not permitted to set them off 150 feet from any occupied structure. And, and they almost always are.
Yeah, most of our housing plans, that would be the case. As far as Zach's comment, as far as the dates, the reason those dates are put in there is because you're gonna be outside the hours of, if you would do, uh, the time limits. You know, like the four to- And, and I would be fine with doing the time limits, uh, like maybe four to eight on Sunday through Thursday, and then, uh, Friday, Saturday night, you know, it could be later.
And, and based on what, what Craig's saying, it, you, I'm almost, if, if I'm reading you right, what you're saying here is, we're almost better off than just on putting time limits on it and not getting, and not going any, any deeper than that.
That would be my advice. I mean, but you guys can go as restrictive, as restrictive as you want to. But I mean, I, I, I believe that when the chief arrests somebody for doing that, or, or one of our officers do that, just like with curfew ordinances and things like that, uh, that you're gonna find yourself involved in a challenge situation, you're probably gonna have the shorter end of the stick on it.
But time limits aren't gonna work on your July and New Year's Day. Because if you put a time limit on it from four to eight, let's say, every other day of the year, then you're saying they can set them off on July 4th.
Well, you'd have to-
So you're gonna have to have some-
That would fall into like Friday, Saturday, and ho- and holidays or these times, or something of that nature. I mean, I'd say go back to the KISS principle, keep it simple stupid, and not get too much detail or down into the weeds on it, so.
Yeah, I think you had a good idea, Darren. I'll just say, uh, you know, for your later times, the holidays and the weekends, and then just come up with a time-
What's gonna end up happening is, is if the chief sends these guys out there to make arrests and it ends up getting kicked out, well, it's gonna be like it has been forever and a day on the 14th of July when fireworks were not legal in the state is, "Got the blinders on, I didn't see a damn thing." So, am I on my line?
No, but, but we discussed the 150 rule. I mean, that's the one that's in the, that does have teeth.
Yes.
Uh, it's, you know, obviously we'd like to, you would wanna have an officer be able to see where they were, they were discharged from. And, you know, if it's within that 150 of an occupied structure, you know, if the officer can reasonably believe, I mean, he's not gonna be able to tape measure and go in the backyards and take measurements, but if he can reasonably look at it and say, "Oh, yeah, you were between two houses when you shot that off. I can see the smoke," you violated, you violated the, the state law. So, I mean, that is, it is one part of it that does have a little bit of teeth to it. I still have concerns about enforcement, like we just talked about. And we, we, you know, if the board decides to move forward with that, we can talk to Mr. Alexander a little bit further about that, but that's my concern.
Craig, a question. What about, uh, people coming forward saying about violating their rights, about setting fireworks off?
Oh, you know it would. Again, that's, that's the same thing as, uh, excuse me, with, with the, the, the curfew ordinances and things like that, that when, when you violate them and you, and you, and you arrest them and you prosecute them, then they file a challenge that you're violating their rights, uh, to, to free association. Now, I don't know if letting, letting a, a, a firework off is, is some guaranteed constitutional right, but certainly it's something now permitted by state law. Uh, and, and when something's permitted by state law, can you regulate it? You can't regulate the purchase of alcohol at ga- gas stations. Only the state can do that. So I, I, I would be, I would be as least restrictive as you can and still try to get your point across with the hope that you, you don't get challenged down the road. And I think what you're trying to do is be a deterrent so that these things aren't being fired off at all hours of the night. You know, esp- you know, the, like, uh, Dwayne said, the, the autistic kids, the elderly people, and the dogs are, are especially susceptible to those loud noises. So I, I think that, um, if, if you're able to deter that somehow without actively looking for prosecution, that's what you're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it's a board consensus. Do you wanna maybe Jeff come back with something that has just maybe, uh, some holiday hours and, um, weekends, and then something just for during the week and bring it back to us?
Okay, if I can just like, if I can interject one, one question. With, I, 9:00 has been bandied about as a time to shut fireworks down. I just, you know, in the summer, it doesn't get dark till 9:30. I mean, is that something, I, you know, as you write an ordinance to try to get something that's gonna give the least amount of public pushback, we would put, you know, would the board consider maybe 10:00 during the summer? I mean, you could have summer months.
Between, like, Labor Day and-
And holidays, but then, but I mean, on, like, on a normal day on the summer, if you're gonna shoot fireworks at 9:00, it's-
I don't know. If you just keep it at 10, I'm, I'm kinda thinking what Darren said, just keep it more simple.
Okay.
10, 10:00.
Well, that's why, that, that, that would give us- And also, I, I will say that this is going through the Senate right now, and they're wrestling with putting times on it. And that's probably the biggest thing going through the Senate right now is finding out, you know, the state's gonna, they realize they wrote bad legislation. They wrote soft legislation, and now they're, they've gotten pretty much, uh, kicked in the shins forward from just about all their constituents. So now it's coming back to, uh, a more regulatory ordinance. So hopefully, a lot of these questions will be answered by the time we get this through.
Do we, do we know how far along they are with that?
They've been working on it right now for how long? I mean, on, yeah, I, you know, e- every time our lobbyist, you know, says, "We're close," you know, there's some other weird thing put onto it.
Just like Goffey Robb is gonna be paid.
Yes.
Got it. Got it.
Okay, I will bring, uh, another draft forward to you.
Thank you.
The next, uh, issue is noise, which, uh, you know, Commissioner Plasko presented an ordinance and kind of drafted it up into our form, got it out last month. Uh, the chief did, he, he did a review. I believe he contacted the, uh, the chief from East Hemphill where this ordinance came from. So, uh, this would be the next ordinance up for discussion.
All right, I'll start off. In section two, prohibited acts and violations. Section B, subsection one, it says radio, television, musical instruments, et cetera. Again, that's something I think we should look at having a difference between, uh, Sunday through Thursday time and then a Saturday, Friday, Saturday time weekend hours. And, um, I think we have to also distinguish between commercial noise and, we'll say, social residential noise as we go through this. But I would like to see probably a 9:00 P.M. cutoff for, you know, Sunday through Thursdays and looking at maybe 10 or 11 o'clock for Fridays and Saturdays when we're looking on these items here. So that's the first one. We get on to construction also in section two, subsection three, construction. And I had a lot of complaints, um, from my mom and my parents on Jennifer Court when the Schuster developers were developing it on Weber Court. And my mom would tell me they would start construction at 6:00 A.M., and then continue until about 10:00 P.M. at night and hear, uh, machinery moving all day long. So I think that's, we have to, something to consider, especially when we have more development within the township, protecting the rights of, uh, property owners. So looking to cease, um, construction by 9:00 P.M. on that one, and I'll stop and then jump back in.
Chief, I got a question for you. Probably maybe don't wanna know the answer, but how often we really do get noise complaints?
Um, not often.
That's kind of what I was gonna get to. I mean, I'm not saying-
I mean, I can actually give you numbers on it.
No, that's not necessary. That's what I was kinda, I thought. But, um, I'm not saying updating our policy is probably not necessary, but to try to get more restrictive and more restrictive. We're just getting back kind of the same thing with the fireworks that I'm thinking it's gonna be hard for you guys to go out there and say, "Well, I guess it's a little bit loud." I mean, um, obviously, you know, if a resident is, you know, playing loud music late hours of night, I can understand that, and you might get a call and tell them to go turn it down or, you know, shut down a party or something of that nature. But, um, to get more and more restrictive, uh, I think's maybe going down the wrong road, especially if there's not a problem currently.
I agree with you.
I agree.
Now, let me ask you this, Chief.
Yes.
Under our current noise ordinance, if we have complaint, do we have any grounds to stand on?
No, and I had a cho- I reviewed the, the current noise ordinance, and I think I put it in that memo. It, it's not, it's not well-written.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it, it probably definitely needs to be looked at. I, I put that in there, that I'm all in favor of it. Um, this one, I think, is completely overlegislated. It's 10 pages long, it's cumbersome. I defined a lot of the things in the memo that I just have major problems with. Anytime, boundary lines, property lines, um, and there were some things in there. And I put that quote right in the front of the memo, and it, and the chief was very nice to talk with me. And, you know, and he said, you know, "Find a better ordinance, and when you do, let them know." And he told me I could quote him. So, I mean, that, that kinda summed up his feelings on it. Now, he did say there were some good portions of it, but, you know, there were a lot of things in there that he, he didn't like and needs to be rewritten. A, a, a 10-page noise ordinance, I think, just, is just, that's a lot. It's, there's, you read this, there's a lot in here. Uh, it's, 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 it's things like, definitions I, I, I think are poorly written. I don't like the prima facie section. I don't like that at all. I don't like allowing two separate residents, um, to prove private facia. Um, that, to me, um, opens up neighborhood disputes, especially when it's neighbor versus neighbor. If two come together and say one is doing something, that, that stands as prima facia. I'm, I'm not, I'm, you know, that section there, I think is, I'm not, I'm not good, I'm not good with. Um, so there's, you know, there's a lot of things that I had a chance to review on it. But I do, I, you know, I think our noise ordinance is poor, you know? And I think that it's obviously, it, it definitely could use some review. And if we can, you know, get in there and, and it would help us when we do run into those situations if we had a little bit of teeth in our noise ordinance. But this one, you know, I'm not, I don't really like this one very much, in its current form, in its current form.
Jeff, would it be impossible to just make something a little bit more simply, simpler, that's updated from our current policy?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we, we, we'll get together, planning with, with the police, and we'll come back with a, a redefined ordinance for you.
I agree with the chief. I mean, I think having a 10-page ordinance is hard enough for all of us maybe to grasp, let alone, uh-
I have a question. Do we have some sort of unstated policy? Because I've talked to roofers and people like that, and they, they say they're not supposed to start pounding until 8:00 in the morning. So is there some sort of casual, unspoken type of thing?
I believe the current ordinance doesn't it say 7:00, if I remember right, for construction?
I had a couple of construction people tell me 8:00, but maybe they just wanted to show up at-
Forget your daylight, they're trying to take advantage of daylight. Seven is always, is what we've always given our contractors, that whenever we sign our, our contracts, they can start roadwork at 7:00.
Now, is there a cutoff time for that?
It's 10:00. 10:00. It's 7 to 10:00.
Do you know for construction work? I think it is. Yeah, I mean, timeframes are good, and it's always good to have them in place. And it helps us, you know, I like having those rigid numbers, and that doesn't, that's a good thing, you know? We can come out there and fill it, it's after the time. There's not any room for interpretation, and that makes it clear for my officers.
Any other discussion on the noise ordinance?
No, I'd just like to thank the chief for his analysis on that. I think, uh, he answered a lot of questions I had on it, and, uh, again, it just goes back to what I said, you gotta keep it simple.
That's all I have. All right. Any further board comments?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Discussion, all is in favor by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries at 7:46.